Yeah. It's all about, we have the front and back of your claims sheet. Not very many. So I figured we just start this meeting like we always do, call it to order at 5:30 and go to the workshop part and then go from there. Okay?
We don't do a pledge at 5:30 or?
No, no.
This is the camera right there?
Yeah. Like, I don't know why the screen, why's the screen over there not working? They're watching us right now.
Who's?
On that camera, Midwest IP to make sure everything goes good, they're on it with us.
So what camera's supposed to be on that one over there?
That monitor over that we, because the HDMI is not working.
It might be asleep. It's in asleep.
Pick it, I'm gonna do.
It doesn't show on there?
I don't see any mouse. There's no mouse to this. Oh my gosh, you can't.
I don't know, there is. It might not be working. You know where your mouse has to have a monitor for. Don't they have enough evidence for?
It's done. Now it's done. It's not, it's not up. And I went and got her mouse. And it's not doing anything.
Is it cause those cameras are on?
No, they can see, they, no, this, we're chatting. They can see us, but. I can't see them.
So no sign language?
It might be able to read that.
So far, but taking me off the three pills that it didn't need.
Again?
I'm not getting dizzy.
He's feeling a lot better.
And then. I'm also in the process of. I'm down to maybe just two pills instead of.
We don't have a computer, Jared said to hook it up to a monitor and that's what we did.
Everybody's gonna hear that.
If you look to the south. You'll be able to see the monitor that I'm talking about.
She's talking.
No, it's not, I don't have it in the gray box too. Yes, it's in the gray box, not the computer. Um, just into the monitor. But it is in the gray box and the monitor.
How much does it save us? Sending those, does it save us money spending those um invoices out by paper?
Yes.
Instead of the other way?
About thirty-five cents. Of each because the postcards are way more expensive than. The paper and the envelope, yeah. You have to put the other in, the HDMI into the computer, a little gray box. So I need to get another computer?
It sounds like you need like a. A actual, yeah.
So do I? I know you're listening, do I need to get Tina's computer and put it in here? Okay? It's not hooked up to a computer. Yes, sir. They think I'm crazy.
That'll.
We're in mind from now.
Yes. The gray box. Yes. It, it is. It is.
I was, I thought it was a little kind of their internet scam.
Yes, to that, to the monitor.
So I started calling her, going to check and I said no.
Should I try a different HDMI port?
That's a great thing, but I hope before they've put me on those things. I had re-bugs, I would choke by that, I almost said I was gonna die.
We didn't say the pledge.
Yes. It's not only. And see on the HDMI in the back of this. Monitor. Right there. Okay, alright. Okay. Please. Bye. Okay, we won't be able to see them tonight. I'll get everything. This is a borrowed camera from Hagerstown. Because the camera that they ordered for us didn't work. So we're waiting on that.
So why do you still pay the same price?
But keep stuff.
What's rebar high wire? Garden's fill, it's in the water again.
I borrowed it.
What's the rebar and?
Rebar.
The elements, it's garden soil, rebar and uh.
Garden soil. Rebar?
Do you have? Rebar, engage, rebar high wire?
Um. I don't remember what to tell you about that for.
It's water, I just said it would be useful.
Well. Um, well, it's tie wire. I don't know. And they may have used. It might have been for when they moved the. Fuel tanks over there. To get ready for. The construction. Maybe, I, I, I don't know.
You have any more? Are we done?
That's it.
Junior guy, you down there?
Uh, Dwight Stone?
I'm doing Cedric right now.
He just moved right along?
Here, I'll give you this one, you can lift for the gun. Maybe I would look at. With this left.
Okay.
What, buy an animal food?
Because they're, they've been getting their certifications. Right? Animal certification, your certifications. Very early training.
What are we, what are you?
Animals to get your, your, when trying to.
This is for patrol rifles pool because right now, if we were to. Heaven forbid, we were ever to get into a active shooter situation, worse. Have to pull out our rifles and shoot someone, the insurance company would. Probably sue the department. Not that. They would get forward, but right now, we are state certified. Or state qualified. Um. Which is all the state requires. But the, when it comes to it, having the certifications as patrol rifle. Um, protects us. Civilly. They can still try to sue us, but we can say, look, we've, we've been through the training, we know what we're doing. This isn't, you know, this isn't negligence on our part. So. That's what that is, but the good part is that's a one-time cert. Once we've got it, then we just qualify every year. And that's five hundred around the person.
You have to elect West School.
Yeah, we discussed this. I, um, remember that I cannot. Get them to locate other than the front. The other one. And they can't, Center Point can't locate the gas that when you Google one eighteen. West Maine, it's that light pole. So there, I, there, I'm looking into that as fast as I. Can because we've been paying for that.
And that even sound like what I had last week.
I have, I've had this. I'm going on round three.
That's me down there. I've had it, I've been where you are, I'm good.
I haven't, it's gonna be that like.
They speed them to me every time I go in there and I think.
I want three, this is my third time.
Holy crap, is it like a respiratory thing or sinus?
Instead of a respiratory. But my lungs, they did x-ray on both times, my lung clear.
It sounds like it's stuck right here.
Yeah, that's why I needed, that's why I had to be instructed, ears, nose and throat. Cause they don't keep prescribing, so. Their life knowledge means so far.
Right.
I don't know what else to do.
You gotta read, cause it might be the problem right there. I said, did you go to read? That might be the problem right there.
Where else do you go? Because they don't see it for. A cute thing like this, they only see you for your ordinary. Follow-ups. So you go to urgent care, they do a chest x-ray, they stick the light down your throat, down your ears.
Stick the dragon, stick down your nose, yeah.
So that's why she wants to eat and tea, stick the camera down my throat and down my nose. I've had that surgery, it's not very pleasant.
Nothing goes up there, nothing. No, no, they just bring a little mouth up and had a COVID test.
Usually they stick that camera down your.
Like a humming spray or something?
Then they just. Before long. It's like payback in there at the bottom of yours.
What happened? Why?
Yeah, a little red.
Janet, inside your little orange folder that I hope you leave here is the packet for tonight's um. Stuff. And a copy of the revised employee handbook is in there. I haven't gotten everybody to sign them yet because I'm slacking. I was sick for a week. I don't remember, I didn't see them.
So. Is there a reason why we pay gravel for?
For what?
Gravel to Mark and Joy?
They paid us back.
Oh.
That, we have to, we go get it, they invoice it. And then Teddy and Quentin handed me the card and. That out, and then she come, she, I sent her the invoice, she came in and paid it. Mary?
It's a check off sheet.
Yeah, that's her, you understand her.
Uphill property, we had that accident.
Yes.
By the way. We're over here, but he took out a stop, he took out a street sign.
I, why?
Uh, we had a guy.
Yeah, I know that.
Breaking down the curb, or sorry, girl. Straightened up the curb here at the end of town, went, went train track hopping. Hit it, hit the tree in front of that trailer and ended up in the road.
Right.
Take a ride, destroyed the Jeep Gladiator, it's unfortunate, but. She, he, they, whatever, took out a. Street sign, I put it in the report that you got a street sign and that is the town, doesn't even own the street sign, but I don't know what that does.
They just, they'll, will bill them.
That street sign's gone, but fine. I wouldn't be surprised if the neighbor upstairs don't believe in us, but I can't.
That much loading allowance, sure.
Yeah, my boat.
So.
Um, they actually get twelve hundred.
So the, the top, top, it looks like it's down on the count again?
It's fixed and now they just gotta go get it.
So where did it get fixed? Why are we challenging? I thought that was gonna be. Stopped. Because he was going to look and trading it, because we're putting a lot of money into it.
The, the um, guy that's doing it now is Tom Pounds, and if you look. He makes it this last time.
Yeah.
Um, he charged us two hundred and twenty-nine sixty one time and ninety the next.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know what was wrong with it this time. I don't, I don't know.
Smart plugs and wires.
No, I don't know why it's not here right now.
The initial. Issue that we thought, or what we still think was happening was the mechanic that we were taking it to. Was more of the problem because.
Might be forty, because it broke down, but this is our third guy.
No, this is my second.
Yeah.
Cause we took it here in Cambridge and then. We didn't like that quote, so he took it to Centerville.
He, the guy here in Cambridge quoted us four grand.
Yeah.
Where the guy in Centerville looked at it and said, I can do this for ten bucks. And it was spot. And then the issue that, that I know of as of right now is something with the AC, I don't know if it wasn't working or if it was just getting recharged. I, I don't a hundred percent know what was getting done this time.
I say before we put any more money into it, it needs to come to council before. Because we're keeping on putting money in, we just spent like four thousand dollars in it, or three thousand some dollars in it.
I mean, I don't know that there will be any more. Hoping there's no more issues, honestly, but. If that's your guys' choice, if that's what you want, then.
It seem like it's been down more than it's been working.
I know Tom is frustrated, I know that much, because he doesn't, he wants to be in that vehicle.
Cause it went somewhere else before it went to.
Okay, or caught.
It went to Corners Road first.
Didn't it go to Redmond?
Yeah, then it went.
No, I don't think so, because that Redmond was a.
He did something, he did something I think to it, and then he went to Jimmy next time. And then now that's.
I mean, you're very, I think, if I think, I can't talk. I think you're right that it went to Redmond, I don't know that they did any work, I think we got a quote from them and it was stupid high. Because they're a dealership. And then instead of going to him, we went to this guy over here in Dublin, or, okay, Dublin, Cambridge.
Yeah, I saw Cambridge.
He fixed one or two things. Um, and then wanted to charge us a crap ton of money, where we were like, well. That, we felt like it was the same problem going on and on, and so we had a second opinion, the guy said he could do it for ten bucks. That he, this guy over here quoted us four thousand for, because he wanted to swap a radiator and all this other stuff.
This is what we think they're wrong.
Say that again?
This is what he thinks is wrong.
Well, no, it fixed it, once they, once they did the, everything before where, what's working, being worked on right now, or whatever's being done right now. It fixed it, there is no more problem mechanically with it, I think this, what I was told. It was AC related this time and it just needed a purge to refill.
And how much is that?
And then it was around two hundred bucks, if I remember correctly.
It's an expensive, uh, period, so one, two, three, four, um, which is like. Five, six times more expensive than the one thirty-four. So it was a pricey recharge.
But that's all I know, uh, Tom would know more information as to what is going on with it right now. Um. Which I'm using stuff back yet.
In the meantime. Just sitting out there running all day and never overheat it, just say, see what we're doing.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know.
All day, that makes us feel really good.
I think it's bigger speech, but.
But I pray.
Always sitting in his office, doing the paperwork and stuff.
He uses a remote starter. For lease. Yeah, you gotta. Pull vacuum, pull up, pre on. Generally, the biggest, what, is that a GM product? Okay.
He's lucky, you know, he only had to pay two hundred. When I was the manager, we would charge two hundred dollars just for a one thirty-four recharge. Uh, we couldn't even do the one, two, three, four, because the equipment was too expensive for us to buy just store. Uh, we couldn't even do the one, two, three, four, because the equipment was too expensive for us to buy just store.
Which is what they're running into right now. Whether the equipment they have will work or not.
GM has history where the, the seal around on the compressor leaks. And you have to pull it out and you have to polish up the shaft, cause it gets like a film on it. Pretty common, not uncommon for GM. They buy cheap. Or just put all four windows down and go ninety instead of eighty.
Being, you know. Good AC back in the day. Four windows down, sixty mile an hour. Those little, like those little windows that you could turn, that was perfect.
I'm going on your Model T touring car, but you can only get up to thirty-five miles. And I got lights that flash on it on the back.
Yeah, that's all we need, right?
So you want this?
No, just leave that right there. In a month. I put a copy of our statement in there.
It's tight, but it works.
I know, I saw your message.
Yeah, just to see.
And everything, is it gonna have to take twelve, but?
No, I, you can get.
Eight? With a handicap in?
You can give a gap between the two tables, you can do them in for in.
Do you put it on the front one?
Not yet.
Where'd you put the first, the picnic table?
It went into the first.
gazebo?
First gazebo. Closest to Agnes's house.
Quentin, what is that pole that's over there between the two picnic tables? It's got a box sitting on top of it.
Up front.
Oh, up front, it's um. It's an action verb, a utility.
I think the box is just over a certain range, are you gonna let it get down?
I know that's where we always.
No, there's a big electric box down by the monument. Big electric box.
I think that's where they're, because I want them to have power. I think that's where they're tying in, because there, there, I noticed there was one there and then there's two that comes up by the gazebo's.
Well, that should be coming from the back, Cherry Street, cause they're supposed to bore under and feed.
This has been here for, the one up front, it's been there for a while, it's an old utility. Like, do they used to have a power or a lighted sign or something up front?
We had Milton Days, it used to be a big, like electric that they would.
That's what looks like is old.
Used for when, like, we had um Milton Days.
Back in the day?
The people could use for their electric.
Is there anything attached to it?
Yeah, it's only got six meters that nobody can.
Never moved the box. Yeah, yeah, for something that's. Not there. It was that, I mean, it's only gonna fall off the ground, so it's probably not there. But they, they consider, that's probably the fifteen dollar one where they charge each month just that after service. If needed, and that's when they start charging.
We'll send that out, take a picture of it, we'll come back. Cause there was somebody looking at the. I have no clue who he was, and I drove by. He was looking around like, I think he was trying to get the doors open on it, he was bald headed.
Is there a lock on it? Tomorrow, we make sure there's a lock.
Certain things you have to do to get the doors open.
It's running to a house.
I think that's.
The intent here is that the owner of the vehicle. If they receive notice. That I don't think, yeah, I would have a problem, they could order violations like that in court. I mean, if, if the judge throws it out, because it was, that was a place not enough. You know, on a, a vehicle, it's safe from the, it'll work. I think it's fine. Yeah, here's the law. I would say that, again, and you see, you know, and I'm sure you. Right, probably, obviously. So it's, it's visible right there, getting your providing, no, just to solve it, you need to do something, or it's gonna get. Going up, I have properties, a separate, a separate issue. And one, two of them have.
No, I don't.
Do something else with it, which is not right up here. Yeah, that doesn't really solve the problem, the good thing, if they just refuse, why? I would say. I think we would need. Remove a vehicle. I would think that we would need. Going so. You get into all kinds of problems.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The true republic, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for. Coming out today for our regular monthly business meeting. We kinda combined our welcome. In with the regular meeting because of the. Call-ins last time. So I guess we'll start out by reviewing the claims of June tenth. Of twenty twenty-five through July third, twenty twenty-five. Now give us a minute to look over and then we'll.
This is that, right? What we just did.
A little reminder while we're looking over everything that uh, we try to keep our. Speakers to about five, well, five minutes, you know, cause it, it runs into other people's time and. We haven't had too much of a problem. Do I have a? She's making the motion that we approve the claims for June fifth. Point twenty-five to June third, do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Right, all in favor? All opposed? Motion's carried for that. Right, now we're gonna look at it at the minutes from June, from the June tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting, which was a special. Hmm? Do I hear a motion that we approve the minutes? Of the June tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting? And it's, now that'll be two separate motions, won't it?
Yeah, you're gonna, you did a special meeting first. The twentieth? Yeah, you did the special first, cause yours did.
Oh, did we think we were doing claims or did we think we?
You just did the claim.
Alright, so now we're gonna approve the minutes. And are we gonna do that twice for?
You can do it, I don't care if you just do it once and.
Approved the minutes for the June tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting and then accept the special meeting minutes, June twentieth. Well, that is two separate, isn't it? What say you? Motion to.
I'll make a motion to accept both the tenth and the June thirtieth minutes.
My second.
All in favor? All opposed? Alright, now we're uh ready for our. People that are on the agenda tonight, and like I said, we would try to keep it about five minutes or so. So, Mr. King, you're. In charge of the floor right now, okay?
Well, we wanna, we bought the property down in the corner, uh, three one Milton Street. Mill Street, and we'd like to tear down that old house, you guys don't have a comments that. We'd like to put.
We're not gonna argue.
And we, and in its place, just a little bit set, it'd be smaller than the house, we wanna put a garage and a pavilion. For now. So that's basically what we're looking at doing. Uh, I think we have a drawing there of what we're looking at. So if you guys want to approve that, or I guess that would be, that would be what we're looking to do.
Is it, is your garage in the building going to be in the same location?
Well, so it's, we're gonna be a little bit further away from the road both ways, so it's gonna be smaller, so like the southeast corner of the house. Is where the southeast corner of that would be, and then they're, it's smaller than the houses, you know.
They'll be running in the same direction?
Yeah, that's what we're thinking of.
So you're running it along the, I mean, like.
The same way it is now, yeah. They would just settle through a little further, so about six feet.
Have you looked in having property survey just for the sake of not, not coming up with surprise?
Well, they got really good neighbors.
We'll bill her. So we ran across that here, where a lot of the original markers have been moved and all that.
Well, the setback issue would fall on the, on the, where the street setbacks are, I don't know what that is off of that, or, or if there is one or whatever, but. Um, you know, I was hoping that where the house is sitting, we could put the new building because it kind of adds privacy from. When people are driving down uh Milton Road there, so. That's our proposal.
It's hard to see that house though, if you're coming. Yeah, you forget it's there, coming into town.
Oh, you have that new house on the other side of the building? Yeah, yeah.
So you have really good neighbors.
Well, nice to meet you.
So I think you just probably have to come in and apply for the.
I want you guys, uh, their, their application for the permit is in the packet.
Yeah, I did, I, we, with the application.
Send me in with your packet. Try to keep everything in one.
Unless you're a hundred year old and lived here, you might not know where to look for the marker.
Season I found them, our, our markers were in the street. Nailed.
Oh, the center of the street, yeah.
Some of them are four by four.
And we have that too.
My house was built in eighteen hundreds and I found a rock where the property line was.
Didn't say Plymouth Rock, did it?
Are you sure it didn't say Rod? Is it rock?
Rock. It was a rock. It was a rock. It's, it's a giant rock. With a bunch of numbers that are worn off. Somebody clearly engraved with.
Yeah, so I don't think we have a problem with that.
I don't, I would just, you know, like, make sure that they know that getting it surveyed protects you. In case you thought, oops.
On the other side of the, like, directly west of us, okay.
It's kind of an L-shaped lot.
So that, that old garage doesn't go with that? No kidding, no kidding. So I do have a question, if I, if I have a minute, um. Does water and sewer never really run to that lot or no?
I bet out the sewers.
I'm sure that our, you know, town and chili guy can find it out.
There, there's probably a tap maybe, like, by the road somewhere.
Where they, where they would have put it in, if, if somebody was. I guess that, I didn't know if the line runs through there, if the taps are in, or like, is everybody hooked, everybody hooked up to that or?
Supposedly. Alright.
There was a lot of questions.
Last day tomorrow.
So I don't know whether being empty for so long, if there was. Yeah, so they wouldn't have made them that property.
So the tap wouldn't have been there, even if the.
Probably not, I'm not a hundred percent.
What would be involved with getting that?
In, in the past, hook up pursuers like over a thousand dollars. When we first.
We're probably two that look at part.
So you're saying the line doesn't run down to Milton Road there either?
That's the main lift station that since.
Well, I was gonna say, it's just right there.
It's not gonna be a long one.
I'd be interested in at least pursuing to see what we could do.
If there's a big maintenance on that road, there's sewage. If there's a big manhole on that road, there's sewage.
Do I know?
The big manholes in the roads, those are our sewers, the big manhole, there's sewage running down the road.
Who was the property owner?
I don't.
David Crouch was probably the last thing. That's his mom, thanks.
Did you get it by a pop-up? Or was it, I don't know what the guy's name was.
Water real estate agent.
Oh, okay, I get it.
Because normally there was a pipe, like, down my road, there was a pipe. Well, no, like, down the middle of the road and then the hubs went off that.
Ours went down the alley.
Or, yeah, that just depends on where, how they ran it. So I'd say Mill Street would have.
The guy for that, the work, okay, would that be Quinn? Oh, okay.
So, yeah, so there has to be. Pipe to run the hub. Out of somewhere.
Across the street from Joyce and then up the hill.
Cause we know the one across that that guy just bought and is fixing up, it does have sewage, uh, but it wasn't originally painted. Eddie, that woman, I believe, so there's a line to hook up to.
Off of Mill Street.
I think so, I just don't think that property's up there.
Right, I didn't know if it was off of.
Does that line was redone with?
Will we help you?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. If, if you don't want to sit the rest of the meeting out, it's up to you.
Oh, we have to prove that.
Oh.
I need to prove that.
We're gonna approve that, uh, the motion that we. Approve the uh building permit.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Are y'all in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
All opposed, motion's carried.
Thank you.
Me and Teddy will be down here to figure it out tomorrow morning.
Okay, yeah.
Whenever you want to stop back in.
Alright, my beer spraying underneath that house.
Well, I think there is, because there's water runs into the back end now.
It all flows downhill.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't know, the spring comes out, probably fresh.
Well, we have a spring in the.
Alright, our next person on the agenda is a no-show.
No-show would be Donnie Onstock. And the reason he's not here is because today's my birthday, but he asked me to bring the installation that he's, there can, and when I say there. We all know who they are. Their concerns are the park, sidewalks, fire department painting and new windows. Light pole at the park, why hasn't it, has it not been replaced, the one that got knocked down by the tree. Picnic tables, we discussed the pole on the ground. And I've already brought it to, and so did we at the last meeting, for Quentin, Stop Mowing Rob's Property. Park and sidewalk, everything is running right.
So what's, who's doing the surveys?
Christian.
How did he come back?
Cause he got a letter.
He got replied.
He got, um, multiple texts, multiple phone calls, no response, so I just sent him a letter. And told him that we would look elsewhere if I didn't receive, get a response within ten days and he called me. And they're here, and it wasn't certified, it was just regular mail.
He had, he didn't have a holding proof.
Yeah, and I don't really want to discuss live what happened to.
Right, right, but what, what's, his best option is, when you have that communication, if he would have left the door for communication. So when he doesn't communicate next time, he'd no longer.
I just told him that outside my house.
Because communication, if he would have communicated with that, with us. We might have been more forgiving, but when you don't answer phone calls and text messages. And being honest.
But I would, no, I would have hired somebody else.
It's not that easy to find, though.
So, and I told Donnie this in the window about the fire department painting and windows, he gave the quote to the prior administration in. Here. And it was passed, I was here for that meeting. And that's where it stopped. So I asked him to get three more quotes, bring it to council. And then I, I, I think that once they bring it to council, they need to also take those three quotes to township. And then the decision be made mutually.
And did he get the essence for the windows or just the painting?
Windows and paint.
Another question is, do you really need windows?
Yes. Well, they do need windows. Those windows are.
Well, the one is back in the kitchen area, but they're in the bay.
That's where they want the windows, in the bay.
They want to put new windows in the windows that, where a lot of people don't. They let the lights come on and they keep the bay where people can't peek through.
Yes.
If you go to far, most volunteers.
It's a box.
Yeah, it's a box.
Very small windows that are like frosted over just weathered light.
So I know that you were not here when the pole, the light pole was ordered or damaged.
But I don't know if the lighting. When, I think it's, what's his name?
Well, this, this pole that I'm talking about is one of the decorative ones and it goes out front.
It's, the pole itself is set in the garage, but it was.
Randy?
I thought it was. That was Turpin was supposed to put it up. I know Bruce talked to him when he was still here, but that's the last thing I heard.
Oh, it's been a year.
It's been since.
So, is that something you can pick up? You have to re-drill, but the holes don't match or some, that's what I remember.
The base on the bottom doesn't.
Yes.
They, they're wiring it, it's so, that's no good for me.
Could you reach out to Turpin and ask him to put this on his list?
I mean, yeah, but. Lights are still on his list.
What lights?
The streetlights, I got tied orange paper, I'm gonna have to do it myself, cause I told Turpin about it, he said he's gonna get this guy to do.
What is it for, the streetlights?
Uh, just the light bulbs are out and four of them. Turpin's the one that's supposed to be responsible for, that's what I've always been told, I asked him, he said he would get on it, and he haven't showed up, so.
Turbin might have been in, in charge of that because we didn't have a bucket truck. He had equipment.
So we do, we, do we even have lights?
So I'm gonna have to take one down and get, get some warning.
Or check, check with Turpin, see if he's got them.
You have to probably reach out back to him. Cause if he has them, because he's supposed to come and do the job, they're probably just sitting there waiting for him to do the job.
And we already discussed, um. The molly of the trailer and the picnic tables, so that's all for him. That was twenty-three.
I know, he's talked about multiple times that, he's been wanting to get that done.
I was here for a meeting, so it had to have been between August and December. Of twenty-three. I don't know, I, I can't, I've looked everywhere, can't find the, um. Quote anywhere, and I told him that.
Is it in the minutes anywhere?
No.
I don't think he ever, yeah, I don't think he ever attacked with his son.
Well, they approved it because I don't, I don't know, I don't know, I, I don't know. I, I don't know, that was two years ago, so.
I don't think. Contract with our quote two years.
When I, and I, I've told Donnie before. He, that he, when he was talking about this to me in the window kind of aggressively, I said, Donnie, go get new quotes. That's all I need you to do, is get new quote, you wanna know why it's not painted and the windows haven't been replaced, because none of us are coming, go get the quote. Go get.
Why is it Donnie and not the firefighter?
Donnie is a fifty plus year.
It's a lifetime.
Lifetime member, and he took it upon himself. To do the, to get the quotes and everything, and that's what lies.
But there was a guy that he worked with that actually climbed on the roof. Measured the roof to reseal the roof, along other things, and he said, see ya, I'm not coming back. Because he thought he had the job. And never got released, and he was putting other jobs. Delaying them, because he was gonna do the firehouse first. And nothing came through, and that was the past administration that was responsible for all that. Cause I've heard Donnie talk numerous times.
He seemed like he's told you this a time or two.
Would the funds be there to even do that?
That's what I, I don't know, because they may not be able to get to us until next year. So if they can't get to us until next year, I don't know what, um. No ship has, I, I don't know. I can't answer, I don't know.
What kind of grants Matt may be working on?
Yeah, can they get grants to, for improvements of the building, yes. So maybe Donnie, maybe I should tell Donnie, he needs to talk to the chief. And ask him, because I know that at one time, wasn't that on the list of repairs and stuff for grants?
Were they working, or were they working on the forty-five oh six or?
Five one oh C three?
Yeah, yeah.
Five oh one C three. We're on the table now, we're not sitting, sitting back here, we're on the table, he said that last night in the meeting, just waiting for the approval.
Yeah, cause what's on the table is. A generator, making that warming station. New lighting. A washer and dryer for, for the equipment. Because that saves the equipment, because it needs to be washed.
So they are, they have a washer and dryer set home.
Bentonville, they volunteered for us to use it, they can do six sets clothing at a time.
Anybody takes all day.
I know, like, when I was on center, they got, they had a, a fire dirt washer, and don't get me wrong, they are phenomenal, because if you. I've been inside of structured fires that you come out of, and not only do you stink, all your stuff stinks too, because it's soaking wet. And then hang, if you just hang it on a rack, it's like, it's like taking your coat and hanging it in a, in a warm closet for days on end. And, you know, it will grow old, I've seen.
Well, the same thing goes with helmets and all that, that those. Have a, have a life expectancy, that I never, ever hurt anybody in the nearly thirty years living here on the fire department, say, hey, there's a life expectancy on these helmets. Or on the jackets.
Everyone, every, every bit of. I've got a, I've got turnout boots from when I was in the fire department, I still have. I, they were not NF, NFPA certified anymore because they're almost ten years old.
Donate them for boot drives.
The reason they're here is because every time I end up working and there's a storm, I'm walking around and like, every time I walk air. And so I'm like, no, no, I'm gonna, it's a storm, I'm gonna come in here, I'm gonna put my, my, my waterproof boots on, and then I'll go drag trees out of the runway.
Yeah, there's a list of items that Matt wants.
And I think that especially once he gets fired with the one C three. They'll get grants all day long and have more availability than you'll ever think of.
I think that's one reason why he wants that, right?
Yes.
So he can, like, is that, they always have to have that for a lot of your grades.
They have to have that, and then they have to prove that they were doing the billing, which they are doing the billing.
Billing, like, when he was on there a long time ago.
He's doing it, he's, Josh is doing the billing now, he is doing.
I mean, it makes, I mean, if you actually do it, it makes. Just taking notice down and actually do it.
Alright, Quinn, do you have a water sewage update or?
Um, not really, not a whole lot, uh, thing going on, we've been getting ready a little bit for the projects coming in. Um, we're down a couple trees so far. Um, moved the fuel tanks and dug the ditch, the trench for the electrical outlet for it, so. Now I'm gonna open the extension cord running off the fire department parking lot. But then.
They look nice, thanks.
In the realm that they're extension cord. How difficult, and maybe you can't answer this, but how difficult would it be to run that? Extension cord or, or whatever line into the building and tie it to a timer? So that effectively, all we do is we would go into the building, turn the timer on for ten minutes. And it would give that, uh, power for the next ten minutes while we go fill up, and then. We can drive away and it'll eventually shut off this timer. I, and if you can't answer it, I understand, I just, it was a thought that I had that I was like.
It's, it's getting it into, you know, a door or a window and getting it.
And then everybody getting the permission to go into the fire department. I know, I want to.
Who else needs it, then? I mean, if they wanted, if they wanted in that building back enough, they'd get it.
Everybody has a code, you know.
Oh, you got, everybody who would need to get there has it, it was, it was a thought.
I go in there with the simplest guy, so.
It's just a thought, if. It would alleviate like the key system that we have with there. Like, we need to get rid of the keys, we would have to worry about that, and. It would also.
Then you're giving out more codes and then if you.
I mean, not really, cause like me and Tom and Jerry already had codes. Bartle gave us those when they first put it in, so there's not.
I don't think everybody that needs codes has it.
I'm saying, like, you wouldn't have to give code out to anybody else, like, we already be there.
I mean, that's what's, that's the point of the lockset. What would be the timer for?
Well, you don't have to get out and unlock it and have to lock it back. That's exactly right.
He didn't get off his car anyway, so that's probably.
In my defense, this isn't all my idea, it actually came a little bit from the assistant chief fire department. Uh, because they were. I don't honestly know what his thought process was behind it, but he brought it to me and I kinda liked the idea, and so I figured that out.
Well, there's a mu- municipality north of here that they did away with other hard keys. Everything now is magnetic. And it's got a cert code. And they can get gas, they can do this, they can open doors, places it can't get to, the magnet won't work.
But unfortunately, sometimes those magnets, cards becomes demagnified. Where it's at, and guess what, then you can't use them anywhere.
If you get one of those cards too close to another one of those cards.
Right, so we had them at work and. If you put it by your computer or certain things, next time you go to use it, oops.
These are actually a round magnet. It's, it's hard magnet, it is not. It is not a card. Cause they, they ran across that problem.
Yeah, ours was always. Wrong, like.
A little like that.
Yeah.
That's what gets me into all the, uh. School, whatever, I can't think of their name.
Washway schools.
Yeah.
Does it collect the data whenever Tom choose?
Yeah, it, it, it's got a little barcode on it, and every time I buzz through an area, it thinks what that code is and, and who it is. So.
So do we, do we have her? I was gonna say flock, but it's not my flock.
Cause we're getting there.
Very useful, about two, three weeks ago when Martin stuck.
Yeah, yeah, we got contacted about that, so, are you done? As long as you're good, I'm gonna stick up a thought, cause I don't like to sit and talk to people, sorry. Uh, yes, our lockset, uh, we just, I just got an email. Um, I just got an email back from them because, uh. I was curious as to what was going on too, because I hadn't heard from them, our, um, we did, like. A week and a half, we could get our permit, um, approved for them to do it, now we're waiting on Flock to come out, survey the areas. And once they survey them, they stick them in the ground and we're good to rock. So I would say probably in a month or two, um, they will have everything done and we will be. So I would say probably in a month or two, um, they will have everything done and we will be up and running.
Did you say the permit got accepted?
Yeah, yeah.
So by the time we left that parking lot and got sunburnt to in here?
Yep. I know, I thought the same thing, I was, I walked back in after they had said something, I was like, what, what's this? And it says approved, it says a scheduling, pending scheduling, which means for them to come out and do the, the survey, um. They told me from the get go, it could be up to six months before they're in the ground, um, we're working on month. Two, so I think we're going pretty good, I'm hoping that by the end of this month, beginning of next month, they are in the ground, we're ready to rock.
Would that benefited that if we knew his license plate?
Hundred percent, that's what originally caught him in, caught the one in Connersville. Was they pinged off the Connersville camera and they thought it was coming this way. Uh, we actually, we tried to pull it off, we're still down, cameras on the building, but unfortunately, there's not enough motion on the highway to, to pick it up. Um, but we, myself and Tom, uh, worked with the detective tutor out of Connersville to try to. And you up with that, unfortunately, without our flock cameras, we didn't have Jack. I will tell you this, because we already, oh yeah.
He got in there and with. If it came up, State Road one, that's these two spots, it would ping you guys.
Correct.
Wouldn't they pick it up on the Bentonville Road at the end?
They're not camera there, that's a county camera, and that's the other thing, so I saw, I finally, huh, after nine months. Finally got with the guy from the sheriff's department about theirs. And he kinda was like, oh, I never knew anything about this, I was like, well. Sorry about you, we went and did our own thing, and then they were like, oh, well, can we play too? And I was like, no. But, um, their camera, they don't have their camera down on Bentonville Road, got taken out, uh, something about. They had, it was a malfunction with it or something, but it wasn't working anymore, so they took it down, so there's no camera from State Road one all the way up, so once we get ours in. Be nice, um, I will tell you this though, on the fifth, three days ago. Uh, I arrested a gal who was HTV or a Mitchell traffic violator allegedly. Gotta say that, um, for, it pinged off of one of Centerville's flock cameras. That I just happened to be up in Pershing when it pinged off and notified me. And by the time she had come through, I caught up with her and subsequently arrested her for the, for the felony arrest. Uh, but they are coming, I, like I said, I looked today, they, um. They said that the permits are approved and we're just waiting on them with this point, so hopefully that moves along a little quicker.
I thought that would have been fine.
Yes. That's why, like, uh, Josh Tudor and I are, have been good friends for a while now, and he asked me, he's like, he's like, hey, I know you guys are getting them. You have them yet, I'm like, no, he's like, man, that would have been great, cause it pinged off their one at, uh, Walmart. Their one that they have sitting at Walmart, they, uh, it, it pinged off of that camera, but they don't know. Well, it's got a front plate on it, that truck has a front plate on it, so it.
Going south, right?
No, it's going north.
Right, but I thought that it was out there by the airport.
So, I don't really know how that happened, but like they came. They came out and around and about or something, because he was, he was showing me a picture of the front of that truck on there. On, on this, on that, going this way, so I was like, I don't know if they like. But waterloo. For some reason or what, because, uh, I do know there's one out that way too. Um, so it had never pinged off that camera either, but, um. But yeah, had we had the cameras in, that would have, it would have flagged that truck. And if one of us was on duty, or even if, you know, even if we weren't on duty, they would have had that investigative lead the same as we would. To be able to go, okay, well, we know it passed here, so we're still going north, they end up, um, finding some of it out on seventy.
I don't even know what you're talking about.
Uh, a guy in Connersville, he's a contractor, had his two trucks, a car and a mini excavator stolen.
Same night, same day?
Yeah, all at once, pretty much.
Came up to the garage, asked me to.
Oh, that's a whole different animal, that's not even, that, that insurance agent, well, we'll talk about it.
No, it wasn't, no, I, the driver, they were the owner of the, the equipment, you pulled up to my garage, you told me. That number I gave you wasn't it?
Oh, no, that was it, but that's not who, that's not who he thinks he is. Well, I'll talk to you about it next week. No, you're good, I'll just, I'll, I'll explain here in a minute, cause of that, but, um. So, that's the flock system, the, uh, the only other thing, uh. Uh, I, you guys have the, uh, the data sheets tied in the, um, I know last month. Uh, we didn't get it to you guys, so I made sure to get, um, May's put in there, so that you guys had May's and June's. Um, May, Tom.
So what happened in May, June?
Uh, to be honest with you, what do you mean?
What happened? What happened in June?
We got a full time officer. So now we're taking more calls, because we don't, me and Tom don't work at the same time. Very well, for the most part, we don't work at the same time. Um, yeah, so we took thirty three calls for service, now I can tell you that about ten of those were in one day and a lot of it was stormed itch. Um, who does Teddy, cause he, he and I were dragging crap out of the road, he was dragging limbs that I couldn't move, so. Um, yeah, June, we, we had a big uptake, again, it's summertime. And, and we were, I expected that, plus bringing me on full time, then increased the number of calls that we could take. Um, because we're actually here, uh, same thing with traffic stops, um, we cleared over fifty and. Not quite. We were twenty, yeah, so over thirty traffic stops, um. You know, so moving up things there, same thing with the ordinance violations, May, um, in May, if you notice, uh. Ordinance violations were up, we were at twelve, Tom wrote twelve different ones, or between warnings and actual violations here in foul. Um, and then again, this, this month, we were, here are three more actual violations. And, or five more actual violations and three more warnings, um. Something else that we did do, um, I don't know if any of you guys saw it. You see right out this window, there was a silver car parked along the side of the road out here that sat there for. Years probably, um. In the process of going through the ordinances on our end, um, we found where we could actually just tag the car, and if they didn't deal with it. We'd do it, I tagged the car, about two hours later, it was gone. Um, in the process that we updated our little stickers that we have, because the ones that we had, we were scratching out one department's name and writing ours in, and I felt like that's kind of like. Happy, um, so we spent, I think it was like a hundred and fifty bucks and got all new tags. That, um, are bright red, you can't miss them. To where we see a vehicle that's been sitting for longer than three days on a public roadway that hasn't moved and we. Definitively can say three days, we can go over, we can slap that sticker on it, and they have seventy two hours to make that car move. Unfortunately, our ordinance. Yeah, you know, um, most people aren't gonna do that. I mean, unfortunately, that start to restart the clock, but, um. Most people are just gonna go, okay, I need to move this car like these people did, then they park it out back, which takes on public signs, so we're good there, um. I think that was, that was the most of it, the other thing that we had, um, today, actually, me and Amy had a meeting with Ed Dot. About, well, I talked to him about the signs too, but, um, about this traffic right now here.
They, oh, no.
Don't get so excited.
I'll say, just, just wait, cause what, they, they asked for this meeting, uh, we didn't.
Posted on Facebook.
Do what?
I can least respond to people's Facebook.
Right, well, yeah, potentially, so what they're proposing is, um.
End my phone.
They, they, they pretty much gave us a bunch of sta- statistics. Um, that I can give to you guys and let you, and let you look at, or I can read them out, but effectively, what they, what they said was that, uh. At peak times, so between four thirty and five thirty, um.
Eight, six, seven fifteen and eight fifteen.
Yeah, uh, there was. Going southbound, there's only three hundred and twenty one cars going through in a. It was a, that was the total, yeah, so in twenty four hour, in a twenty four hour period, going southbound at this light, there's only three hundred and twenty one cars. Their statistics, I mean, they, they do it, uh, that's just going south in a twenty four hour period. Going north in a twenty four hour period, uh, was two hundred and thirty six, so. People leave, people come back, probably the same people going back and forth to work, um, going westbound, there's thirty four. Um, going. There's only eighty cars in a twenty four hour period now. This data is from April ninth of this year, is the twenty four hour period, is the day they did it. Um. They have a, they didn't give me all the paperwork, but they have a, um. What they call a warrant, it's different than our warrants, but they, effectively, the state puts out this thing that says, hey, this is what we consider to be averages. And we are well below average for a traffic client. So what their proposal is, is to eliminate the red, red, yellow and greens. And make it a four way stop or a two way.
Two way with the yellow and a red.
They won't do yellow. They say it's, they've done enough studies, they say it's too confusing for motorists, because then they say, oh, well, we thought it was a, a red both ways. A four way instead of a two way.
Was what they, yeah, wow.
Yeah, so what their, what their theory is on this is the way it would work, if you wanted to go with a two way, is it would. Be completely open on State Road one, there would be no stop. And, um, there would be no blinker, there'd be no nothing, and yeah, and then this way would be. A red blinker with stop signs, and effectively, what it would be is if like you're pulling into it, or if you, if cross traffic and stop. Which is in my opinion, an accident waiting to happen.
Can you do a four way?
That was the other suggestion they had, was that there would be stop signs put on every side and a blinking red light on all four, or all the way directions there. Um. They, they have the science, the data to back up, saying that we don't have enough traffic to really have a traffic light, and along with, um. That already issues that we have.
So would Milton be responsible for painting that one?
It is all in dot.
That's safe.
Every bit of that is, every bit of that, they would put, so what they said is, if we wanna do this, it'd be a six month trial period to make sure it's gonna work first. Um, after, or they would, they would come in, they would, um, effectively change out the box over around the corner. To make all the lights flash red if a few guys wanna go with four way, um, and then they.
Where the average stop in a four way is ten seconds.
Yeah, and the, they ran a date, they have a computer system that will run for a round to see. What that's like, and they said that, um, at most during their program at peak times with our traffic time, traffic data. They said at most, you have two cars waiting and a ten second wait on the light. So like, you know, you pull up, you stop, if no one's there, you go, if you pull up, you know, you got somebody, you know, the rules of the road, you. It's exactly what it would end up being, is somebody to say, no. The other thing that this does is inevitably will end up stopping a bunch of people, because they blow the light. Which we already do anyway, um, but.
The street, the crosswalk lights will be gone.
Yeah, the, the walk and stop sign, the thing on the side of it, so it tells you when to walk and when not to walk, those will be taken off, because. You can't press the button and make, it makes someone stop, um, they said that.
The only benefit that I saw out of it, it would slow the semis down.
It would slow everybody down.
Or everybody, but then they are the. Yes, and I stated that standing out there, I said, my concern is. We just built the park, there's constantly people crossing one.
Like five little kids just walk across.
Yeah, and they just said that, um, the law still states that if you're in the crosswalk, you get the right of way. Well, if you're coming zooming through here and playing on running that red light, uh, you're gonna get. Over somebody, yeah.
I mean, to the, and I, and I say this because I play devil's advocate.
They don't know why the light.
If it's a red light and some semi comes through here and somebody's walking across that road anyway.
Couldn't tell us why the light. They wanted it twice.
They have no clue.
They have no idea, it could be others sitting on the weight, they named a couple, few things. That it could be, but they have no idea what it is. Why?
The giant, they said there could be water on the giant magnets in the road out here, like they're, they don't know. And they have no definitive plan to fix it either.
Right, like in Connersville, one. In downtown, they just tell them. And Connor Martin arrested, I'm talking about.
By, um.
Sure.
Yeah, and the dollars, or not dollars, the movie store, right, the old movie store?
And now there's three down through there, one has blinkers and there's two that doesn't have any lights, but it took the lights, everything out.
Well, they said that they did the same study, eh, they started this study in Richmond, and they did this. Where they took the lights out, South Twelfth Street.
Probably the seventy five percent of the lights out.
They had over seventy traffic lights in Richmond and removed, granted, I'm from there. And I, it, when I first went through, I was still hitting my brake, there should be a light here.
On that, now in Connersville, they made them, so they took two lights out, the two overhead lights completely out, they're four way. But then the one is a four way that has blinkers, so it's kinda confusing.
Same to this thing.
Right.
And that's kind of the beauty of ours.
It's like the, the tower out there, just like fell over, and they said it would be the city's responsibility, I think, and it's real expensive.
Because that's not a. Which is the big difference we have, that we don't pay a dime for any of this, that they're in, they're bringing, and he didn't say how many, but at least one for every. Uh, every intersection stop signs, standard size stop signs, they'll put them up, they'll put them in, uh, they will. They'll do that in the first, before the first six months is up, so that everybody gets used to seeing that.
Put, um, signs where it said the, um, information signs, north and south.
Like the big placard trucks.
Stop ahead, prepare to stop.
The signs be flashing.
So what it'll boil down to is, they, what they're talking about is their information signs, so like, you ever seen on the side of the road where it says like. Road construction, next, you know, blah, 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 they'll bring those out for a short period of time, or I say, sure, probably for six months. Or thereafter, and leave them here, and it'll just say, they didn't tell me exactly, something like stop again, or. New traffic pattern ahead, whatever, so that people get the chance to, you know, and I'll be honest with you, from a law enforcement standpoint, like. The first couple ones, we're not gonna write you a ticket, no, I'm gonna stop you, because you never know what you have in your vehicle. But I'm gonna stop you and we're gonna talk and I'm gonna go, hey, look, there's a good traffic pattern, make sure you're paying attention, uh. But that's what they wanna do, um, me and Amy talked to them, we told them we're gonna bring it to you guys and let you guys decide if that's something you wanna do. They made sure to emphasize that this is not the federal or the state government coming down saying, you must do what we say.
You don't, we don't have to do anything, but, but, but deal with what that light does when it's temperamental. That's, that's it, cause they're not coming out here to fix it.
Ultimately, their suggestion, and their recommendation is to change it to a two way or a four way, in my opinion, it's a four way, it's safer. But, um, um, but they, they, they were pretty much saying, hey, look. This is what you should really probably do, you know, as traffic engineers, we've studied this, we've done this, we've looked at it, we know the numbers. This is your best option here. Um, but also, we're not, we're not gonna come down from the state and say you have to do this. No, I personally think that's, they, they didn't say it, but I think it's a yet, honestly.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't foresee them saying, oh, okay, it's fine, whatever, and then moving on from it, I think they'll come back.
See, that would get a traffic circle. Just kidding.
Do you imagine the amount of semi accidents we'd have?
Yeah, driving up and over. That was my concern was.
It's kinda.
Kids, the kids, the kids, the kids.
And, and I think the, the answer to that is, you know, if, if everybody does what they're supposed to do, which is really what you're expecting out of this light too, you know, you're expecting when they press that button. It tells you to walk, that light's red, you're expecting them to stop, uh, same thing. You come up to an intersection, it's got a flashing red light on the giant stop sign, you're expecting that person to stop. As you, before you cross or as you're crossing, um, so I think definitely a four way is a better option.
Yeah, I think so.
Uh, especially considering they, uh, they pretty much told us they won't put the yellows up anymore, they just don't, because they're. Right, they, they, they're trying to get rid of them, they've gone, apparently they've been all over the state trying to get rid of. That, and they say that it's confusing the drivers, because. They say, oh, well, we thought it was a, a red blinking all, on all four.
Yeah.
Exactly, but, um, that's all I've got, um.
This decision, the decision does not have to be made. And Jeanette, like you said about Facebook, if you wanted to post this option out on Facebook and see what everybody wants.
I don't know how to do it.
It's, it's, I can put it out.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, there's a way to put out a poll to like, to speak out Milton and the, what's the other one? Uh, Living in, Living in Milton, to put out a poll to see if people will just say, hey, yeah, I like this idea, or no, I don't like this.
Well, what's our goal, we're trying to get them to stop, we're trying to win.
What's our goal? We're trying to get them to stop, we're trying to get them to slow down, but speed. Speed is the key out here in the morning and in the late afternoon.
Seven fifteen to eight fifteen and fifteen to five fifteen, that's our most.
I, I don't have an answer to that, like, I don't know that, like, this right now.
Cameras take pictures of the driver, like they do in Detroit.
I think that if we do anything, it has to be four-way.
Well, already got cameras.
It's too dangerous, right?
They don't do that, they're just, I wish.
I said, I'm gonna tell you right now, as a grandparent and a parent and grandparents and grandparents that in this town, it'll be a four-way, force two-way.
I agree, I mean, from a law enforcement standpoint and a safety standpoint from the citizens, I would say four-way is a lot, it's a very.
I even went home and told Eve that this is an option that we're getting ready to propose to town council. I was, I said, I'm worried about Dan getting across the street to go to the.
Yep.
I mean, the big thing is.
Are we allowed to put crosswalks somewhere else on the highway?
Because it's State Road one, I think you have to get a permit.
The reason that I'm asking that is why can't we have a crosswalk? Down by the.
You want, you can apply for a permit, that's how, you can apply for a permit and you can put a crossroad wherever you want it, if you get the permit.
Cuz I would like to see a crosswalk down by the post office and then one down on North Street.
Well, you could have a crosswalk without traffic at a stop, you shouldn't put those little yellow signs out that shows there's a crosswalk there.
And then it's your.
Cause you're already supposed to be only doing thirty mile an hour now, I don't.
The average beating in our town is thirty-five.
Thirty-four.
Yeah, thirty-four, they did tell us that, the average speed on one, right, in our town is thirty-four.
He said that from the time, when they got, when they turned into town until about where the sidewalks end.
Yeah.
You've got about, everyone, everyone averages about thirty-four miles an hour. After the sidewalks?
It's not as bad as I'm, I. Yeah, soon as you get past North Street, or no, as soon as you get to um.
Connerdale Street.
Uh-uh, going north. North is worse than south because you're going into the curve.
Like I sit outside of town, right, but. Everybody coming out of town going south is still doing what they're supposed to be doing. It's the people, when I set up a power paving and can catch doing fifty.
As soon as they get to Elder's House. The gas is getting accelerated cuz the sidewalk stops.
And that, that was one thing they mentioned, they're like, you know, it's not a proven science, but it is a very well-known thing that, that you base your speed off your surroundings, not the actual speed limits. So even though it's a thirty, it's clearly posted as a thirty, nobody does thirty. You know, in all honesty, he's probably doing thirty-four.
Thirty-five, twenty-five, I counted this.
Oh, the light bulbs?
Yeah.
And kind of light.
Well, even if you have a crosswalk, which some towns have done this in pass, a crosswalk that you have to manually operate it.
That's been Florida. You push the button and it, and it stops.
Right.
Flashing lights come on and you have to stop.
Yeah, you don't have to put no big, why, uh, this, uh, the four in the middle of the road start flashing, little red lights.
That's true.
I mean, I'm doing it in my own truck, like.
So if I can figure out how to put a poll on the both Facebook pages, and I'm gonna ask them if you've answered this on this page, please do not answer it on this page.
I mean, ultimately, even if you don't, like, you know how many residents are roughly in this town.
You still got the angry crowd.
Well, that's the point, like, you're gonna have.
Had to wait forever.
I told them, I did tell them, I said, when I came in, when I messaged or got on the website and emailed them about this light. The traffic, I saw it with my own eyes, was clear back to, backed up to North Street.
So they were taking a right both ways and going around.
Yeah, so. That, I actually, you know, I kinda made that comment, don't worry, but I think we're gonna have more negative problems, people about riding through our town versus the people who live here.
I see a lot of tickets getting written.
Yeah, uh, uh, I think that the people who like here in town that are already here are slowing down, that aren't wanting to drive sixty through the middle of town. We won't, we'll have no problems, you know, they'll be like, yeah, this makes sense. The people who are like computers that go from Sugar Creek to Connersville or Wake Forest, they're gonna be like, this is dumb, now I have to actually.
Be here on a Saturday morning.
Yeah, but.
When they're going towards Laurel, they go dirt riding.
Yeah.
Then they come back.
I stopped a guy, what, uh, fourth, on the fourth, rode the ticket for it, cuz he went right through, he, he sped up. I heard him, cuz he driving a little, old rattlers, I call them, and uh, I was sitting back against the trees where you couldn't see me going, if you're going south, and he sped up before he passed me. Cuz I heard his car kick in and he passed me out and watched it turn red, he just out and through and said, that's easy stop.
Yeah, Jerry said the same thing, he, uh, that one day that he worked days, he said that uh, you can just sit right here and pull, pull them over all day long when that light's nice stuff, cuz they're gonna run it, cuz they don't wanna sit there anymore.
And that's the other thing I've noticed, uh, here lately, for whatever, I, I say whatever reason, I know why they do it, but people come to our lot.
Yeah.
And go out and go across the street into the mini-mars lot and then out on another one again, because they don't wanna wait at that light. And I watched it happen on the camera one night and I'm like.
Yeah.
Because technically there's nothing illegal about it, as long as they stop when they cross this road out here. Ain't nothing legal.
We need to open up the old toll road.
Or have gates on this.
I mean, I, I, people talk about that, how it came out there by the ice place. And there was no house.
Like the Milton bypass.
Yeah, right. It, we have one, it's right out there on Pennville. Directly.
Well, you guys have any other questions for me about it? They, they did, uh, say that if you guys had questions or wanted to sit down with them, being the traffic engineers. Uh, just to get ahold of them and they'll come sit down with you guys and chat and give you any, anything that you guys have questions on, they'll answer, that kinda stuff, so. But they, uh.
Term liability to completely get our, our lights or shut down when we walk across the street. The kid gets hit.
The state highway, it's on state.
It'll be a mess.
Technically speaking, if you want me to be honest with you, it's on whoever hit them.
Right.
I mean, that, that's who the liability falls on, they, they, there's no way they could come back and sue the town because you didn't have a walk signal. You know what I mean, like, just how it works. Um, they would say, well, there's many of other places that don't have walk signals that it's not how this works. Um. I mean, I guess as a law of suing people, you can sue anybody for anything, but whether it actually, yeah, whether it would actually go through a walking thing. But is there any other questions for me or anything?
If I can figure it out. And we'll talk about it next month. We don't have, that light's gonna be there until we make the decision. Okay, I'm trying to figure it out. All right. Turn it to five.
All right, so we don't have a fire department report.
No, but I went to the business meeting, uh, last night and it was pretty, what you see is exactly what they talk about. Second annual golf outing is scheduled for July twelfth, um, at nine AM at, uh, Winey Branch. Seven teams are registered, they're still trying to get, uh, fifty-dollar hole sponsors. And I, I, they asked me if I would send out a reach out words. Uh, Engine Two is expected to return within a week and then Engine Four will go out, it has just some minor repairs to be done. Uh, the eight hundred megahertz radios have been ordered for all the trucks and the station. And training will be provided upon the installation. Firefighters on the roster are encouraged to respond when available. The department is seeking tablets for the rescue and the engine two to enable on-scene narratives to be entered while they're right there instead of coming back to the station and doing that. And then Nick Vog has decided to retain his position as captain after reconsideration and discussion with multiple individuals.
So his brother only?
He's still on the roster. Like, he's still on the roster. Yes.
What, is that the option?
Yeah.
I know they both.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you know, I didn't even realize it was both of them, I think I thought it was. To be honest with you, like, I, I think I just saw their faces and like, didn't think twice that day and was like, huh, you saying that made me think about it, I'm like. It's definitely a different person.
All right, that takes us down to unfinished business and uh, the live streaming services following a special meeting on June twentieth of twenty twenty-five, the council selected Midwest IT for live streaming services at a one-time cost of one thousand four hundred sixty dollars, which includes equipment setup and service. And we just have to figure out and use it.
And they're right there, they're watching us right now and we are live.
We just can't see it, but I think that, I think that HDM.
Yeah, me too.
And then we still have our employee.
That's done, the employee handbook has been revised. And I gave you each. The latest version and I need to make the copies and get the employees' signatures on them and give that stuff in their file, but that's done. The only thing we have left is, uh, that's, let me see, four, one, two, three, four. Possibly another one, five ordinances that need to be done, uh, um. We're moving around long actually, a little bit faster than what we have been because we've been, we've got a plan.
I think we, when we meet, just going over like that, reading them, I think that helps.
The way we did it at that meeting was simple, cuz I just sat here and we made the changes and done. Directly, uh, we did it during the special meeting.
All right, I guess that brings us to council updates, if anyone has anything they'd like to talk about. So it's, it's a go on the sidewalk again.
Sidewalks are still being installed, they've been diligently, this past week working at the park, um, Dwight and the guys went over and moved one of the picnic tables up into the gazebo. So now that can be used as still a high step until they get it built up, but everything's moving right along right now.
Does any of those gazebos, are they ADA?
Not yet, they, that's where they'll build them up to make it that possible. The one, yes, the one that has the swing is ADA compliant, the one over by the playground equipment.
Yeah, they need some filler to go around the sidewalk to that small gazebo. Cuz they, they got the nice concrete, but it's that much of a drop-off.
And I think that, I think they're gonna fill that in and it's gonna be grass over on the backside.
Just a little bit of cleanup stuff. You have anything else that I need to report?
I think Chris, I mean, it's gonna look. I'd just like to, I would like to set a date and time to do some more ordinance stuff. So that I can get those to Chris for revision and then they'll be done with it. We have four to do, so we need to pick a date and time. And I don't care if it's next month on Thursday. No, no, because the one, I mean, it's. What we need to go through is, and then there's one other thing I need to talk about that I.
What's the ordinance that, that was code?
That was the, um, abandoned vehicles.
Is that one of our four?
No, no, he was asking Chris because there's a thing, thing in there about.
The legal standing as to whether or not we can go on private property.
Yeah.
No, not that one, I'm just talking about, have you said it, in our ordinance that you can just keep it like an inch, means it's moved.
Oh, well, it's just cuz the ordinance doesn't stipulate like.
Right, so we may need us, we might need to look at that.
Okay.
And stipulation in there.
Um, we need to look over the junk dealers and secondhand dealers. Uh, business regulations, animal control, and a park board and recreation board. I don't remember what the other two were, I have them in mind, yeah, if you could let me know which ones they are.
Well, could we work on that at our next workshop?
Yeah. Cuz some of them are small, like the, um, secondhand store, it's a small ordinance, the biggest one is the animals. Is the animals, and like I told you guys, uh, last month, Chris has advised that we would be delaying stock in Wayne County.
I don't know, I don't think I would it that way, I.
So, um, next month's meeting, this is John, next month's meeting is, the workshop is the seventh. But I have, we have to move the meetings, the council meeting, because I will be in school.
Richly.
Yeah. So do you guys care to move the August twelfth meeting to the nineteenth, the following community day? Is that okay?
If I just need it, like, if, and just in a reach.
Yeah, all right, put that in here.
Okay, yeah. So, uh, we had the animals, that's train stores, store, and we had weeds and vegetation.
Yep.
When, tiny, oh, tiny homes, tiny houses was another one.
Have we ever settled on a year of a trailer that could move?
I think we.
Tiny homes.
Wings and vegetation, animals.
The year of a trailer that they move in.
What was the other one? Weeds and vegetation and animal counts. Tiny houses, parking and storage.
I hear you.
There's probably some limitations to bringing in a thirty-year-old trailer.
Yeah, we probably need to bring out, like, for that abandoned vehicles, we might be discussing that.
Well, over by Jeanette, you've got, what is it, there's a, moving bayline trucks that's in the in the property.
It's been loading, we need the.
Matt? No.
Or.
Oh, no, that hasn't. But a lumber has been purchased. And they were moving lots.
Did they have most of them? You're talking about the one. Yes. Yeah, it's in mode, I, I know, I was bringing top thirty, I don't know where they, looks like they're moving most of it. They know whatever it wants. Think at one time too, that there was state code, can't put a semi-trailer. Can't park a semi-trailer in a.
That's in our ordinance.
Yeah, we got that.
But are you talking about trailers on properties?
Talking about a truck trailer.
A semi. How about a semi-trailer with placards on it that says there's, um, explosives on it? Why has that been there for? I've been here twenty-four years, since, sitting there for twenty-four years, and the placards are showing. I can see it from my back door.
Really? I'm thinking of the one where this trailer is hidden in the trees and it's starting to sink. Yeah, starting to lean.
Is it?
Then this little street over here. Yeah, people don't get. Go, go west on this little street.
Yeah.
Actually, you'll see it more from.
My backyard.
Your backyard. Kind of hidden trees.
I don't know, I don't know, it could be that the placard. Could have dropped, but when you see that. Like, kinda, and a truck driver, an ex truck driver as your husband, you kind of, why they got that? And there's a lot of uh those kind of things around. That one that you're talking about, that one's gonna embrace three guys up there.
There's nothing inside of it that's explosive, I mean, placards, it's not gonna matter what you put on it, if it's empty.
I don't know if we have storage. Like that, I don't know.
There's a trailer with explosives.
Placards, but it's been sitting there for so long. That it's sunk into the ground. Uh, up the street. Um, I live.
I'm kidding, I would never do that, I'm totally kidding, no, uh, I mean, if it's been parked there too long, we'll just.
We just don't know if we have an ordinance for. Storage in that type of way.
Yeah, with semi trailer parked on dirt. And the front wheels are sinking, which means eventually it's gonna roll over. Now it's on personal property.
Visible to the public?
If they're using it for storage, it doesn't have to be on a foundation.
Should be.
But it cannot be a. Truly they use for explosives, it's probably a zoning plan.
For explosives, I, like I said, I, the placard covered my head just fallen off, cause it's been there for so long. I think it's storage. But we have that kind of stuff everywhere in this town.
You have to get off State Road one to see it.
Are you, yeah, are you missing anything that may go to like your spare tire?
Cause I found a giant piece of plastic in the road right by your house.
Looks like it's this cap that goes over the spare tire. Just some FYI, I told Philip and Dwight this when they came in.
I'll have to look, but you have been doing a very good job, no, I can't say anything about the others. But you have been doing a good job, because I've seen you patrolling and I have seen. You were out with your lights on when the storm came through and helping with that, so. I've seen, I will congratulate you on doing a good job, but the others were the other, I won't say so much.
I know, but like, you didn't, you didn't tell me, I could be up.
We have found multiple times. Roofing nails. All in this parking lot, and then today, um, outside talking to. Randy and Christian, and I just happened to look down and my driveway was covered. And they looked like they were just. So just be careful.
So don't go visit Amy's, what you tell him, tell him.
But your room driveway is what I'm saying. Yeah.
They probably see me pull up your asshole up, because even when you're not there, I sit there and watch that stop sign.
So you just put a piece of plastic?
Yeah, it looks like they.
Piece of plastic, it looks like, uh, yeah, it looks. It may not even be yours, it may have just come out of somewhere else. It just happened to be on in the middle of the road, but right there might have. No, it was like.
Well, is that where mine would be?
Either that or in your truck, one of the two. Giant piece of plastic, that looks like it's a bolt, honestly.
That goes in the middle of the uh.
I didn't want somebody to hit it, so I picked it up.
Yeah, it's a bucket, you can throw your spare, or your logs in when you're changing it, you got your uh, there's a couple.
I didn't know if it was like crap from an Addison was clearing his house out or something.
Those come out of uh somebody's trunk or the back of an SUV, you have to lift the top up and.
Sitting in the, along the road there on. Brooke, not Brooke Street, but Walnut. Yeah, well, no, it's it's still in the box, it's brand new. Brand new garment, I think it belongs to Lucy. We found it at the, their driveway. But they're not home.
They're not here right now, oh, that's why they asked, that's why they called and asked about their credit. Cause when they leave to go to Pennsylvania, they'll pay like.
Just here the last couple of days, I seen them walking out like rush.
She may not be, Lucy may not, oh.
Her cars there.
The windows were all open.
Dormant for all winter.
We just saw them yesterday and I rushed both of them.
I thought somebody broke in there one day, because all windows are closed for one, and then there was like a little box thing next to the window, I was like, ah, great, here we go. Like, I even got out, like, looked in there, like, looked around, nobody here.
It actually left all those windows open.
That'll help them all. Well, are we ready to adjourn? Do I have a motion that we? I'll make a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Opposed, motions carried.
Everybody have a great night.
Have a great night.
So how do we know the best show?
Oh, I gotta tell. Do they get my computer here? The little tablet and I can push the button myself. Yeah, it's cir- in there circling.
It's a three D or a three hundred. So like effectively it looks, I can see everything in the room and then it has the smart technology that like, let's say he starts talking. It zooms, the smaller pan version of him. What they said, so like if he's talking.
Loss?
Court that actually works, you could.
We're actually paying that back.
Same thing, that if no one's talking, which it happens, it'll just have a plain view of the whole room.
Previous clerk or?